And we're just having a great time. And this cake is delicious.
The birthday cake made with 390 pounds of butter. But this was just one food option because every day there are some 40 vendors to choose from. The market is one of downtown's original food halls to gather so many different cuisines and cultures of Los Angeles in one place, and it's still with us today.
Where you can go from a Mexican to a Chinese to a Filipino restaurant. You can even wait in line for an hour at Egg Slut if you want.
It's a celebration of food and culture like no other location in our great city.
City leaders praising the market which opened in October 1917 in downtown's Bunker Hill area. This is rare footage of Grand Central Market from the early 1960s. And even then, it was filled with produce, delis, and other food options that truly reflected the diversity of the city. Though food prices have changed since then, signature neon signs are still here. Adele Yellen and her late husband Ira purchased the market in 1984. Adele had a message for patrons.
This has been a magnificent journey, and I thank all of you for supporting us.
Here's to another 100 years. From downtown's Grand Central Market, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Make sure to come hungry. Grand Central Market is located on Third and Broadway in downtown and is open every day from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Well, Veterans Day honors the men and women who have fought to protect our democracy. Now, city leaders are honoring those vets who continue to give back to their country and community even after their years of military service. Anna Marcos reports.
The battle at Guadalcanal was a harrowing one for a newbie soldier. Sam Reiner ought to know. He was there, and he had several close calls.
It's a miracle that I'm alive. And on the 13th day in battle, that's when the sniper seen me first, and he aimed for my head. And of course, he missed my head, and the bullet went in my neck. It passed over my spine.
Reiner is among 14 military veterans honored at City Hall for all they've done for their country and communities. Councilmember Paul Krikorian spearheaded the event.
We owe them decent healthcare. We owe them jobs. We owe them education. We need to address the outrageous problem of homeless veterans. We need to help all of our veterans heal their emotional scars, and especially, we owe them our respect.
And these veterans continue to give back. Not only do they champion veterans' issues, but they help build up their communities in whatever way they can.
This is my passion, helping veterans. I helped them find housing. I counseled the women.
My job as state commander, it was legislation. Go to hospitals, make sure that the veterans are getting their care.
Then there's Sergeant Al Martinez, ex-marine turned city employee turned LAPD officer and security guard at City Hall.
During an evacuation of one of our buildings, that Al carried a disabled employee down 11 flights of stairs.
Parting being a veteran is giving you some knowledge of what it takes to be a leader and to be in a community and a group, because that's what they teach you in the service, how to be a part of a team.
As for our World War II hero Reiner, well, he visits local schools to teach children World War II history, and that includes interesting tidbits you won't get in the history books.
And you cannot brush your teeth. I have false teeth now because we couldn't brush our teeth. I couldn't say, "Stop shooting," you know, so I could brush my teeth.
We get the feeling those children won't be forgetting that bit of World War II history anytime soon. And with these awards, councilmembers hope we don't forget all the heroes who fought and continue to fight for our country. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
War veterans were also honored with a big parade in Mission Hills. But saying thanks for your service is not enough. As Gil Reyes reports, city leaders say landlords and employers can do more.
The city of LA's only Veterans Day parade honored military service members.
I'm currently in the Army National Guard here in California.
Active and inactive.
Oh, it's awesome. See so many veterans and the community.
And I am so proud to be the daughter of a Vietnam veteran, a green card veteran that served our country so honorably.
Councilmember Monica Rodriguez and her dad Ralph rode in the procession. Ralph Rodriguez is a veteran of both the U.S. Marines and the LA City Fire Department. Also there was LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, a Navy Reserve officer.
It's a day for us to remember that we can do something, to say more than just thank you, but to hire a vet and to house a vet. And for me, that's really been a focus of my time as mayor with the new Office of Veterans Affairs that does both of those things, helping over 10,000 veterans get jobs.
Vietnam-era veteran John Dominguez wants to go further.
Anybody that's served or have been wounded in combat literally should come back and should have a lifetime hospital care equivalent to a congressman, should also get a medium income from their area they came from. They should have free education, incorporate them back into the system.
This yearly parade in Mission Hills launched 14 years ago with the help of councilmember Bob Blumenthal.
And it's a great way to honor veterans, because we have no other, there's no other Veterans Day parade in the city of Los Angeles.
Honoring all who've served in the U.S. Armed Forces. In Mission Hills, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
When we talk about honoring veterans, we also have to include those experiencing homelessness. Gil Reyes reports on one organization dedicated to housing veterans and feeding them too.
For serving our country, these military veterans gathered in Skid Row are served a big steak lunch on the house. Alvin Wilder, a former homeless Army veteran, savers the time with his fellow service members.
It helps uplift everybody's spirit, you know, and it gives them a lot of camaraderie, you know. Everybody get to meet each other, you know, and see each other every year, you know, and that's kind of important, let them know that they're not by themselves.
The Skid Row Housing Corporation has hosted their annual Veterans Day luncheon every year for the past 20 years or so. And whether or not these veterans are housed, all veterans are welcome to come in, eat some food, and shoot the breeze.
We really want to show them that they're loved and cared about, and we support them and thank them for their service.
Anita Nelson is from SRO Housing Corporation, an organization trying to help the estimated 4,800 homeless veterans in LA County. Southern California has the highest number of homeless vets anywhere in the nation.
We take homeless veterans off the street, give them housing services, and prepare them to move into permanent housing.
But it hasn't been easy. At last count, the number of unsheltered veterans in LA County has surged 58% over the past year. But for at least one day, every one who enters James Wood Community Center in Skid Row receives a free meal, also gift bags with toiletries, socks, and towels courtesy of AT&amp;T pioneers.
Which is a small token for our veterans that have helped to keep us safe and secure and be able to live the American dream. We're truly grateful.
They also receive the respect they deserve. From James Wood Community Center in Skid Row, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Skid Row's Midnight Mission also pitched in to supply 150 free meals on Veterans Day. Well, more Veterans Day celebrations in northeast LA. The city is one step closer to becoming a greener and cleaner city, and an iconic building in Hollywood gets historical status. All these stories in City Beat. Over northeast LA, more Veterans Day honors as the community came together at the Cypress Park Veterans Memorial Park to honor those who served and continue to sacrifice for our country. The memorial was erected 15 years ago by local volunteers and help from the city of LA.
It's a day to celebrate being a veteran and receiving acknowledgement for what we have endured. Many, many veterans have endured much worse than I, and frankly, it's an honor. It's an honor to receive this gratitude and this appreciation from people.
And we want to make sure that they're recognized and know that they have a home here.
The Los Angeles City Council set a goal of transitioning the city to a 100% zero-emission bus fleet by 2030, matching the goal already set by Metro for its buses countywide. Councilman Jose Huizar introduced the electric bus motion with councilmember Mike Bonin, who said that electric buses are a game changer because they help move more people where they need to go without adding harmful fossil fuel pollution to the air we breathe. The Hollywood Reporter Building on Sunset Boulevard was added to LA's list of historic cultural monuments in a move that will delay and could prevent its destruction. The owners of the building want to tear it down to make way for a new development, but the city council's 11-0 vote should delay its demolition for at least a year while preservation options are considered. According to the historical status application, the building is historically significant for its Regency Modern Architecture and its connection to the Hollywood Reporter. Once a month, downtown LA streets turn into a giant art gallery and promenade as thousands of people take in the art scene. As Anna Marcos shows us at a recent downtown art walk, street artists were the stars of the show.
The latest downtown art walk is about bringing art in from the streets. The theme "From Street to Canvas" brings muralists and street artists into a setting they're not usually seen in, the gallery setting.
The biggest misconception about street art is that they're all vandals. The reality is a lot of them are really trained artists.
Trained, artistic, and inspired, even if the work is sometimes, well, lowbrow.
I do kind of lowbrow, sort of bright creepy things. I like to zoom in on animals. I like eyeballs and teeth. Yeah, they're a little bit scary, but I think that they're a little bit more fun that way.
I'm going to be doing like a live performance here in a bit where I draw the public live in a blind contour style. One by one, people come up, and I look at them and draw them without looking at what I'm drawing.
The downtown art walk puts a spark in LA's downtown area every second Thursday night of the month, bringing art, culture, food, and fun to Angelenos, a brisk business to downtown merchants and art galleries, and a new art clientele for the artists.
So being able to do this and invite people into downtown and make them feel welcome and give them a true experience is really what art walk is about.
And with all the wood sculptures, canvases, and live drawings, there's even a little bit of the sublime in these street artists. Here is what drawing a collage of faces means to Davia King.
It's a microcosm to the macrocosm. Each one of us is part of that microcosm, and on a large scale, we make up the whole humanity.
It may be street, but it's deep. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit downtownartwalk.org. Well, get your pick of local handmade goods and designs during a holiday marketplace. Take in all the magic and wonder of the Hollywood Christmas Parade, and if you've ever wanted to dress up like a turkey, well, here's your chance. All this in this week's Things to Do. Handmade LA is Craft and Folk Museum's biannual marketplace showcasing a curated group of contemporary craft and design creations made by emerging and established artists and makers from the greater LA area. The marketplace will feature vendors who the Handmade LA curators feel are enriching the quality of handmade goods in LA. All proceeds from the sale will benefit the museum's exhibitions and programs. The marketplace takes place November 25 through the 26 at the Craft and Folk Museum at 5814 Wilshire Boulevard. The 86th Annual Hollywood Christmas Parade presented by the city of Los Angeles and benefiting the Marine Toys for Tots Foundation will kick off the holiday season with floats, balloons, costumed characters, bands, equestrians, and celebrities from all genres. The entertainment begins with an amazing star-filled pre-show concert. Grandstand seating allows you to enjoy the parade in the tiered seating on the largest red carpet in the world. It all starts on Sunday, November 26 at 5:00 p.m. in Hollywood. The turkey returns to downtown LA. Get ready, the annual Turkey Trot offers a scenic 5K and 10K route on the historic streets of LA. There'll be plenty of races, games, and activities perfect for the entire family. You can really get into character and dress up like a turkey for the costume contest, or just enjoy the potato sack race. A kid's zone will have them busy with face painting and arts and crafts. The race benefits the Midnight Mission. It all takes place Thursday, November 23 along Temple Street. For more, visit turkietrot.la. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, can I please have the members take their seats? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenthal, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferro, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Thirteen members present. Anna Cora, Madam President.
Mr. Oferro, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Mitch.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Oferro. Madam Clerk, what's our first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Oferro moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Harris, Dawson moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds. What's next?
Madam President, due to the upcoming recess, there is a request to send all items forth with today.
That will be the order?
Additionally, there is a request to continue some items. Items 48 and 49 to tomorrow, November 22. Items 1, G, H, L, and M for 60 days to January 19, and item 2 for 30 days to December 13.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
The Department of Building and Safety requests that the following item be received and filed, 1F, as the lien has been paid in full.
Without objection, what's next?
Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards on those items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
And what's next?
Items 6 through 56 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on those items? Mr. Blumenthal?
President, item 46, please.
Okay, item 46 special for Mr. Blumenthal. Anyone else? Mr. Buscaino?
Item 13, I just want to stand, no vote on item 13. If you want to take that now and dispo that.
Okay, no vote on 13 for Mr. Buscaino. Anyone else? Mr. Corretts?
Five special?
What item again? 45?
Yes.
45 special for Mr. Corretts. Anyone else? Anyone else? Ms. Englander.
Item twenty-three, also, just a vote, as a no vote. And then, I've got a request on item seventeen. We can vote on it, but I'd like to take a second vote on that, for an urgent forthwith as well.
On seventeen?
Correct.
And no on twenty-three. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, we also need to open public comment on item thirty-four and thirty-five. Is that correct?
Yes, we can hold thirty-four and thirty-five on the desk.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That takes us to items fifty-seven through sixty-three, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before as now members. Are there any cards on any of those items, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there are cards on all those items.
Members, are there any specials? Mr. Buscaino?
Fifty-nine, please.
Fifty-nine for Mr. Buscaino. Any other specials, members? What is next, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, that takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to multiple speaker cards. The first speaker is Wayne Spiller. Mr. Spiller, before you start, let me just remind you the items you actually filled out cards for. Item one A, one B, one C, one D, one E, one F, one G, one I, one J, one K. Items three, four, five. Fifty-seven A, fifty-seven B, fifty-seven C, fifty-seven D, fifty-seven E, fifty-seven F, fifty-seven G, fifty-seven H, fifty-seven I, fifty-seven J, fifty-seven K, fifty-seven L, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three A, sixty-three B, sixty-three C, sixty-three D, sixty-four. And general public comment. Go ahead.
Then we'll do the special on sixty-four. Okay. So we get liens. Turkey week. Let's have amnesty. No liens on one A, CD three, no liens. Then we have CD six, the Kittred Street lien. CD six. No more liens, no more liens in CD six. Wave one E, and one I, and one K. Because they're in CD six, you're chairing the meeting, you have the power, use the power to do good. Not like Herb Wesson, but do good. Then we have number two, Tefra. Synonym, fraud. Why? Theft of public funds. City attorney, district attorney, US Attorney, not working. City gets to steal twenty-five million. Congratulations. Thank you for stealing twenty-five million dollars of Tefra funds. Because the US Attorney doesn't give a shit about the city. So, on behalf of everybody here from the Chamber of Commerce, welcome to the twenty-five million. Then we get item three, CD one. I can't attack it. Because I promised Gil Sadio Brown Act amnesty for the remainder of the year. I'm not a liar. I keep my word. I have to support number three, even though it's an alcohol license. So I'm sorry, people, but I gotta keep my word, because you know what he did? He did good. I gotta do good. Number four, CD three, no, on the liquor license in CD three. Bob Blumenthal, recovering alcoholic, yes, you have to stop those liquor licenses. Don't take any more drinks on two oh one oh one Roscoe Boulevard. No, right now he's drinking. Stop drinking. No, on number four. Number five, tax-exempt bonds. Healthcare fraud, public financing fraud, forty-one million dollars of theft, and it goes to my favorite place, the Encino Hospital. Yes! Yes, I love the Encino Hospital. Anything for Encino. I'll help you steal whatever you want, as long as it goes to Encino, California. Let's do it. And my good friend, Corrin Price, over here agrees, that's why he's over here. He says, yes, on number five. Forty-one million of theft going into my community of Encino. Thank you so much to CD four, and Corretts.
Is many for general public comment?
Yeah, the general public comment. Let's talk about our good friend, the sexual harasser, Raul Boca Negra, which in English means "the black mouth." He has black mouth disease, Raul Boca Negra. Nury's husband works for Raul Boca Negra, the sexual harasser. LA Times, resign. Raul Boca Negra, get out, resign now, or you will be expelled from the State Assembly. Why do I like it? Because when he leaves, it gets rid of the two-thirds majority of the Democrats in Sacramento. Yay! Now that I just said that, you think they're going to let him go now? No! What's more important than women's rights? What's more important than fighting sexual harassment? Stealing federal and state funds? Fuck Raul Boca Negra!
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Good morning, Mr. Walsh. Let me just remind you, the cards you filled out to speak on these items. Item one, one A, one B, one C, one D, one E. Items number three, four, five, fifty-seven A, fifty-seven B, fifty-seven C, fifty-seven D, fifty-seven E, fifty-seven F, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-three A. And your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Always a pleasure to speak in front of you. HollywoodHighlands.org, check our website, and Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And number, I'll start with number fifty-seven, positively. These are rent escrow programs, you do a good job. I've been renting, I moved to the city in nineteen sixty-six, and I've never had problems with anybody. The city got him to paint my apartment, and the landlord didn't want to do it. Number fifty-eight, street maintenance efforts concerning four. And this is David Rue. Okay, we need street maintenance. That's a good issue. And number sixty is funding Devonshire Police Station. We don't need any funding for landscaping the police station. Devonshire area cadet corps. The cadet corps is for the sexual gratification of certain policemen. We know that. It's actually appeared in the LA Times. And enforcement services around the Hollywood sign, the Hollywood sign is out of control. You have to enforce the law there. And contract terms of the Watts Labor Action Committee, community, and senior citizens, that's another good item that you're pursuing. And Building and Safety Department, number one, inspections, you need more of that. Number three, more alcohol licenses. Yeah, Mr. Buscaino, one of your deputies got murdered, and I understand that the person who murdered him was fourteen years old and had bought alcohol at one of the places where you've given a contract. So the blood, Mr. Buscaino, on your deputy is on your hands, and the rest of you. We have, they never turn down liquor licenses. A fourteen-year-old gets drunk, and he blows away Mr. Buscaino's deputy. That's what's happening in this city. We need a cap on liquor licenses, so that nobody else in Mr. Buscaino's office can get murdered by a drunken fourteen-year-old. Where did he get the money to buy the alcohol? Okay, next, I'm going to go to public.
Your one minute of general public comment, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, Ed Buck, did you hear that name? Ed Buck. He's a very wealthy gay man. He's put money into pockets of all of the mayor and others. Well, he found a dead black prostitute on a mattress, naked, watching gay porn, in his apartment. Yesterday, the Times finally admitted that the apartment was full of syringes. Did he get in trouble? No, because the sheriff's got down on her knees and sucked his cock. I'm telling you right now, Ed Buck can get away with murder. Ed Buck can get away with murder. You might not know him, but I'm telling you right now, that once the mayor decides to run for office, all of this shit, all of his shit is going to come out, because the Times won't do it, because David Zahnheiser is in love with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, are you here? Eric Previn, are you in the room? There you are. Thank you, Mr. Previn. I'm going to remind you, you filled out cards for item one A, one B, one C, one E. Items three, four, five, thirty-four and thirty-five, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, here in the hot mic. And I wanted to thank you, first of all, for running the meeting today. And item number one, which is the lien items, we are, there's a little bit of a mystery at play, and we were hoping that we could get some clarification. As you know, the lien item is where the Building and Safety Department provides customer support in the way of a penalty, followed by a series of additional harsh penalties, followed by an invitation to come down to City Hall to settle up what becomes a lien on their property. So during a homeless crisis, obviously, Bonin and Buscaino are not chuckling so much about that, but what we try to do is help them down here. And what I'm concerned about is that the LAPD, who are under tremendous pressure in many different areas, obviously, tag, do you stand with the captains, Mayor Garcetti? You know, that was an article we wrote in City. They're just, it's not fair when cops try to do the right thing. But here, we have cops who are saying, they're refusing or declining to permit members of the public to say, hey, old lady with a small walker, you can ask your council member if you feel that these penalties are excessively harsh and that you can't afford it, and they may push you out of your home. So I don't think that LAPD should intervene with those people who might offer that guidance to those folks. I just think it's wrong. Now, thank you for looking into that, and it may or may not be your district. I have a hunch about whose district I know this particular incident was in, but I'm not sure. And I hope it will be continued. Nobody loves helicopter maintenance employees more than Blumenthal. But the question of why we are bulking up on helicopter maintenance employees at this time is a really good question, because I am not compelled by Englanders chasing around, you know, idiots who are driving too quickly and then turning it into the local news. We are going to, A, we have and will hurt people, B, it's blocking the news cycle from the other news. Like, for example, we saw a very good report on KCET, Mr. Blumenthal, Mr. Buscaino, on Nazario Saucedo telling the truth when he was confronted by Englander. Did you not spend the nineteen million dollars on street services for any reason, sir? And he said, well, you could discuss that with the mayor and CAO.
Mr. Previn, I need to direct you back to the items that you actually filled out cards for.
Fair enough. The liquor licenses are of note today, because in addition to David Rue, nobody's worked harder than David Rue to block tourists from getting near the Hollywood sign, and he's pouring additional tens of thousands of dollars into that initiative today. But in terms of the liquor licenses, the public has taken an interest now that we're going to be regulating marijuana under the leadership of Mr. Wesson. We're concerned, because we're hearing reports about how they're going to be going around, trying to, I guess, slow, I don't know. I don't know what their plan is, but it's murky and scary for individuals who may or may not be involved in consuming medical marijuana, but
Thank you, Mr. Previn. You have your one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The New York Times had an article today about Mayor Garcetti, who is considering running for the president, but we do have homeless people all over the places, we've heard. And it's not only his fault or doing, obviously, but this morning, or yesterday, in City Watch, we proposed something. It's an idea. I know we need ideas. Which was, maybe decommissioned cruise ships, large boats, could be utilized, because they have privacy and they have a place to sleep. And it would not be permanent, but it would be a transitional solution. Some businessmen from New Zealand proposed it a year ago. It stalled. A former mayor of San Francisco, I don't know if it stalled, but this is Los Angeles, and we have so many people, I mean, it is heartbreaking. And, you know, I just think that we'd love to hear some ideas from the council and from others about what we might do, because the HHH bogdown isn't going anywhere with no audio recordings. We're just going to spin around in circles until people can hear the obstacles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Before I call the next speaker, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take item seventeen from Mr. Englander, and take that urgent forthwith vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam President, there is a request that item one I be continued to January nineteenth.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on item number three. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on item number five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on items thirty-four and thirty-five now. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts, are you ready for item forty-five?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Ventura-Coanga specific plan and the area that it covers, I believe, is very diverse in terms of its needs. And I just wanted to clarify with planning staff that this won't have to be a one-size-fits-all zoning for the entire plan, but that we'll be able to break it up into council districts or communities or areas.
What is your name?
Good morning. Tom Gillick with City Planning Department. I'm in the Valley District Office. We are working on responding to amending the Ventura Boulevard per the motion. And there are multiple options to amending the specific plan, from technical corrections to the existing plan, to actually amending the whole plan. There are also overlay options, too, for the communities that are in greater need of the amendments to the specific plan, as the councilmen had suggested. So we have the 60 days respond. We have started looking at the options, including recoding all of Ventura Boulevard with, under the new Recode options. But we do understand the need for Ventura Boulevard to be looked at after 25 years. So I don't know if that.
Well, I just encourage that we look at the different needs of different communities along Ventura Boulevard and don't just assume that it has to be one-size-fits-all in terms of zoning and signage and whatever else we wind up covering.
No, the overlay is the option, is one of the options. The larger issue, though, is opening a specific plan of this nature is costly and time-consuming. So there are technical corrections that can be done to the plan, that can be done immediately. But then the larger look at is the amendments to the whole specific plan. But it's all on the table, and we will come back in 60 days with a response.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, is that all the questions you have? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Let's take up item 46 from Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. Reason I ask for this item to be called special is because I think it's an important issue. According to LAPD, there were over 7,000 DUI-related traffic collisions in Los Angeles, which have resulted in 60 deaths and almost 3,000 injuries in 2012 through 2015. The United States, one person is killed every half hour due to drunk driving. Each year, approximately 16,000 Americans are killed in alcohol-related crashes. Alcohol is a factor in nearly half of all traffic fatalities. Every other minute, another person is seriously injured in an alcohol-related crash. Economic costs of alcohol-related crashes are estimated to be $45 billion yearly. An additional $70.5 billion is lost in quality of life because of these crashes. And of course, these statistics only tell half the story. Each of these numbers represents a person, a loved one, a daughter, a son, a mother, a father. We must do whatever we can to reduce these numbers. All of us, myself included, have family members or loved ones who have been impacted by drunk driving. The state regulates and enforces the sale of alcoholic beverages. However, establishments that sell both gas and alcohol must abide by local land use regulations. Therefore, we as a city are not preempted in the exercise of our land use authority. Through this motion, we examine conditions for the advertising and location of beer and wine at gas stations and mini-marts in the city of Los Angeles as another way to limit the chances that someone will get in their car, drink and drive. And I'm proud to say, with the help of our city attorney and the planning department, we came up with a way to ensure that we are doing everything we can to make sure these locations are actually following the law. That's why, after my staff worked with our city departments, it was determined that local law enforcement officials also have the authority to cite and enforce state conditions. When we approve this motion today, which I hope we do, the planning department will start to include the state conditions in all conditional uses for alcohol permits. So for the CUP's approvals for the sale of state and alcohol at fuel stations, we'll have those requirements baked right in. This will allow building and safety and the LAPD to also cite any establishment for these violations and forward the citation to ABC. And it gives the city more power through the zoning administrator and the monitoring, verification and inspection program to be able to deal with these issues. Now, I'd like to, I don't know if we can within the rules, what's it? Okay. Call up Jorge Castillo, who is with the advocacy director for alcohol justice. He is an expert on this issue, and we've asked him to say a couple of very brief remarks about this. Mr. Castillo.
Dear Honorable Councilmembers, a long-recognized body of law extending back 25 years to the ruling in the City of Oakland bases Superior Court enables local governments in California through both their land use authority and police powers to establish general operating conditions that apply to alcohol retailers. Conditions such as no beer or wine sold exceeding 14% alcohol by volume, no beer, malt liquor and flavored malt beverages, also known as Alcopops, to be sold in single containers. Such conditions were common practice in the city of Los Angeles until 2012, when the Department of City Planning and the Office of the City Attorney made a departmental decision to no longer allow such conditions and no longer to enforce conditions established in the past. This decision was made with no input from the public or the city council. The city can and should impose alcohol-specific conditions at gas stations as part of the CUB approval process. We respectfully ask the city council to clarify this matter.
And just a question for you, Mr. Castillo. I mean, thank you for that testimony, and obviously, we changed our policy in 2012 without the council formally doing that, and so this is a way to get us back. But how common is this? Is this something unique for LA or in terms of all of California, to have alcohol beverage specific conditions imposed?
It's so common that it's normal. We're currently working with the city of Berkeley and the city of Richmond to apply a ban on malt beverages, malt liquor in single cans, sales at gas stations and liquor stores. Some of the cities that we know of that impose these conditions are Hayward, Richmond, Berkeley, San Francisco, San Jose, San Mateo, Ventura, Palmdale, Lancaster, San Diego, Anaheim. Close to the amusement park in Anaheim, they don't allow single cans to be sold at liquor stores or at gas stations. They only allow cases of beer.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. So appreciate it. So colleagues, I'm asking us for an aye vote on this. I wish we were on the leading edge of this, but we are actually behind all these other cities that are imposing these conditions through their land use policies, and I think it's important that we do that to keep our citizens safe. So I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfield. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on items 57 and 58. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Let's go ahead and vote on items 60, 61, 62 and 63 as well. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Mr. Buscaino, are you ready for item 59?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this item before you is to deal with the new cleaner action plan policy that's been advanced by the Board of Harbor Commissioners. I do want to thank Mr. Bonin for seconding this motion. On November 2nd, the Board of Harbor Commissioners, Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach, adopted a 2017 Cleaner Action Plan update. The plan is a clear blueprint for achieving a goal of zero emissions for the ports by 2035. And in one of the most significant policies the Harbor Commission has voted on in recent years, and will have far-reaching impacts for both neighborhoods surrounding the port complex, the Southern California region, and the entire shipping and goods movement industries. And over the implementation period, this council will consider various contracts, franchises, permits, licenses and leases to carry out milestones detailed in the plan. So I feel that it's appropriate that this council be afforded the opportunity to review the plan before the Harbor Commission action finally becomes final. So I ask for your support and an aye vote on the motion before you, which will assert jurisdiction of the Board of Harbor Commissioners' action on November 2nd to approve the 2017 Cleaner Action Plan and refer the matter to the Trade, Travel and Tourism Committee for further review. This will allow this full body to have a voice in the plan and the significant impacts it will have on the environment, the trade and overall our economy, not here locally, but regionally and nationally. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Englander?
Yeah, you know, I just want to commend and thank Councilmember Bonin also for seconding this motion and for all the work and as being a champion for the port that he's been, and urge you to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. Obviously, at this point in climate history, we've seen one disaster over another this year. I just want to be sure that if we assert jurisdiction over the port's Clean Air Action Plan, I want assurances that we're doing it to make it stronger and more robust rather than to reduce the strength of it. So I don't know how we can get that assurance. Mr. Buscaino, can you speak to your intentions in terms of seizing this opportunity?
Clearly, we need to do everything we can, colleagues, to reduce emissions. The port has done amazing work over the last 20 years on reducing emissions by nearly 90%. So I feel that as this body, it's important for us through the committee that we ensure that, no, the object here is not to weaken this cleaner action plan, but also to have a say in how exactly this cleaner action plan will be implemented. As a kid of the Port of Los Angeles, I remember those days where we saw diesel emissions spewing out of the ships and the cranes and such. And we can commend the work that's being done, not only with the ports, but also through the air quality management district and through our state agencies. And we need to do more. But in a time where this is, calls for a long-term plan, I think we ought to have a voice in moving forward on the implementation. Again, I know this is a set of guidelines, policy that's being recommended by the port, and why not have a say in the implementation? In addition, the last two cleaner action plans, I know this body was very active in the decision-making and crafting the policy. And again, we want to make sure that we have a seat at the table.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Any other questions, Mr. Corretts? Mr. Corretts, do you have any other questions before we vote on this item? Mr. Corretts? All right, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go to item 1B. We have one card. John Guttner? Good morning.
Good morning.
You're speaking on 1B.
Okay, yeah, surname's terrible to pronounce. I was here last year. I had a notice taped to my door, so I came along and was advised to go talk to building and safety, which I did. And they wanted three items corrected on the outside, external appearance of my property, which I did. So I find another notice taped to my door October 6th today, which is the same notice I got before. So I filed a protest against you 10 days ago. I fixed two of the items. I'm in the process of fixing the third. Why is this happening to me? So I really need to consult. I've also got to fill in a form to building and safety on the subject of why I'm contesting a lien.
I've been told that we're going to go ahead and continue this item for two weeks until December 5th.
I'm sorry?
I've been told that we can continue your item for two weeks.
Okay.
To December 5th. If you want to speak to a staff member, you can do that right on the other side of the rope. There's, you see that young woman? She can help.
We'll do that. I won't slow you up anymore.
Okay, well, two weeks is the extension, so you have until December 5th, okay? Thank you very much for coming. The next speaker is Speaker Heron for item 1E. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and Councilmember. I got this ticket for my tenant where he's living for putting, he put a sign for computer for repair, and I already paid full ticket amount, but they are charging $932 in a penalty. I don't know, this is kind of predatory or something, for $400 fine, they are telling me to pay $932 in penalties. I had called at least nine times Department of Building Services. I visited Van Nuys office for four times and no result. And I already paid full penalty amount on behalf of my tenant. I paid it from my pocket. So I kindly request that you remove this penalty from the.
Okay, sir, we can go ahead and continue your item for three weeks until December 12th. I'm going to have someone from the department speak to you. Charles? Where are you? Can you speak to this gentleman, please? Go ahead and speak to Charles from the department, but you've been granted a three-week extension until December 12th, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. So let's go ahead and vote on the rest of the items under item number one. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to general public comment. Tony Vaya?
Good morning and thank you.
Good morning.
Distinguished city council members, city clerk and deputy city attorney. As we are heading into the Thanksgiving holiday, I wish to simply express a few words of gratitude in this chamber today to each one of you for the work that you do in service to the people of the city of Los Angeles. Our city confronts enormous challenges, and as you resume your work on various resolutions and ordinances before you, I would encourage you to engage the people of the city to find creative solutions to the greatest challenges that you face. We want to be part of the solution and not feel that your solutions have been imposed upon us. I am grateful to each one of the five Plumb Committee members, but I want to highlight Councilmembers Jose Huizar and Mitchell Englander for your leadership, because you are asking the right questions and voicing your skepticism about the current iteration of the home-sharing ordinance, including the adverse impact of imposing a cap upon those of us who share our homes as a means of surviving. We are grateful to have a home that we choose to share with others, and we wish to keep it that way. I want to wish all of you a very wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. I prepared Thanksgiving Day cards, and if you would please, Officer, if you would just...
Thank you very much, and thank you for your kind words, and happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Roxanne Stroska.
General Public Comment. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. My name is Roxana Stroska, and I represent the Northeast home-sharing community. It's a great time of year to express gratitude, and I want to thank you for listening to us, as our home sharing is a true economic source, for making our homes affordable. To Councilmember Jose Huizar, thank you for addressing the right concerns at the last Plumb Committee, and just wanted to let you all know that we're honest people using our homes to make an honest living. Thank you. And we do have more cards.
Yes, we have some additional cards that we'll be passing out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no more speakers. Madam Clerk, under general public comments, so general public comment is now closed. Let's move on to item number four. Mr. Mr. Blumenfield?
And, excuse me, on item number four, motion 4A has been posted, circulated, and distributed for council's consideration.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. So colleagues, the motion before you is to deny the application for determinants of public convenience and necessity. It is for an alcohol permit, but in this particular case, the police have opposed it. They have written letters about it. Seven businesses sell alcohol within range of this site. The Winnetka Neighborhood Council voted to oppose it, and I think it is a bad idea to have it there. So we are, put this motion forward, which is to deny the application for public convenience and necessity on this. I ask for your support on the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfield.
It's an eye vote. Yes.
Is there any other speakers? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and recess our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Can you please call the row?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Huizar, Corretts, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Fourteen members present. Madam President.
Okay, what's before us?
Item 64 is an item for its public hearing has not been held.
Okay, without objection, that item is now before us. Do we have any, any members want to speak on this item?
We do have speaker cards on this item.
Okay, go, we're going to go ahead and take those first. Mr. Walsh, want to speak on item 64? Followed by Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. Thank you very much for voting unanimously to, on the issue of denying a liquor license. Too bad it took the blood of a dead Hispanic for you to see the result. Okay, this is an item for which public hearings have not been held. This is state of emergency declared by the mayor on March 20th. This was as he was, as he was leaving town on his campaign. And deadly air quality mitigation facilities owned and controlled by the Los Angeles Department were in favor of this. And I don't just jerk off till it gets to 00. That's it. You can take back your 12 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler on item 64.
Good. So yes, the emergency continues, and you can see in the room, the urgency. You can cut the tension with a knife. Look at how concerned they all are about this state of emergency. Oh, well, Monica's concerned, yes. So is there really an emergency? There's no rain. It's as dry as a desert out there. There's no rain. The rain's not going to come back. We live in a desert. It's an anomaly. We're just scaring people for no reason. 2017, March 2017, it's getting November. We're almost going to be eating turkey. Yes, and some of us are going to be eating ham, except for the certain people in our council. But no, I think the emergency is over. Let's get rid of the emergency, take chances, let God decide what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. There are no more speakers on item 64. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And Madam President, there is a request to also send this forth with.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. There are no more items in our special meeting, so let's go ahead and adjourn their special meeting and return to our regular meeting.
And Madam President, special motion 01 has been distributed and circulated for council's consideration. Two votes are required. The first vote is on the findings.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, did you want to make your arguments on the findings so we can take a vote on that?
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I have a Rule 23 motion for Mercy Housing, a nonprofit senior and homeless affordable housing project in my district. The funds were already approved in the budget. However, it has just been brought to the attention of the city that we have to transfer the funds to the proper DOT account so it can be expended to the organization by today because of the Thanksgiving holiday and the upcoming council recess. We need to vote today to meet specific deadlines, and so I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. We're not going to take a vote to, on the findings that Mr. Corretts just presented to us. Let's go ahead and open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, now that item's before us, and we have two speaker cards. Mr. Walsh on special one, followed by Wayne Spindler.
We need John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. You just put it on the agenda, but you didn't hand, and you handed out a copy of H1 to all the City Councilmen, but under the law, you're supposed to present a copy of this special agenda item to us. I want a copy of the special agenda item that you're voting on. City Clerk, where is the special agenda item for the public?
Mr. Corretts apparently is going to add it to you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Okay, special parking revenue funds for its 26 additional parking spaces at the Pico Robertson Senior Community. We have enough parking spaces. We have a subway that's a billion dollars over budget, and we have enough parking spaces. You could bankrupt us with these parking spaces.
Next speaker, Mr. Spindler.
Good. So now we have the motion introduced by everybody's favorite and senile councilman, Paul Peppa Pig Corretts. Yes, the 48-unit senior apartment community emergency funds for the escrow. I therefore move that $1,430,000 of the Commonwealth Land Title Company be given to special parking revenue. What does this mean? We don't care. It's about stealing money for CD5. As I told you before, I've gotten in coalition with our Southern brothers and sisters in our 5th district. We are out there to steal as much money for CD5 as possible, and Paul Peppa Pig Corretts has gotten big with $1,430,000 of stolen money for the benefit of CD5. Yes, and happy fucking Turkey Day.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That concludes speaker, public speakers on this item. Mr. Buscano?
Do want to rise? Thank you, Madam President. I do want to rise and thank Mr. Corretts for bringing the special before us. Just last week, during the National League of Cities, 4,000 municipal leaders took a stand against this HR1, and it's a bill that's really going to target our ability to move forward on, I'm sorry, special, is this special two? The special one.
One, sir.
I'm sorry. I want to speak on special two.
Okay. We'll do that in just a bit.
Thank you, Madam President. I just got, I got fired up. I got excited over this. This is, this is important to our local municipalities. I'll wait.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, to close?
This is on the senior housing.
Sir, would you like to close on this item before we take a vote?
Say thank you, colleagues, and I urge your eye vote.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Very well. Now we're, special two. Do you want to read that into the record, Madam Clerk?
And for the record, special two has been posted, circulated, and distributed for council's consideration. Two votes are required. The first vote on the findings.
Okay, we also need two votes on this item. Mr. Huizar, did you want to make the arguments for the findings before we vote on this?
Yes, Madam President. This regards some, administered some piece of legislation that is going through the U.S. Senate at this time. They will take action next week. Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell says that it could be brought to the floor next week, and it concerns, yet again, it's a misguided direction from the Trump administration and congressional Republicans that if they have their way, tax giveaways for large corporations would be paid for middle-class and lower-income families. The Senate has made the task legislation even more cruel by helping pay for tax breaks for the rich through changes to the Affordable Care Act that would result in 30 million Americans getting thrown off of health care. And here in Los Angeles, it would become even more difficult to build new affordable housing. As you all know, we are facing the most significant housing shortage that we've ever known. As currently proposed, the tax bill will make it more difficult to build affordable housing. For example, the legislation threatens to eliminate a number of key ways that affordable housing is financed, including the tax exemption on private activity bonds, multifamily housing bonds, and low-income housing tax credits. It will eliminate the deduction for property taxes, which will be felt by the city's homeowners. So I'm asking that we move on this quickly and move on it today to give a loud voice to oppose this legislation. And as you all know, there's very little funding coming to build affordable housing from the state, from the federal government. Here, we're working to create our own trust fund for that, but this would further cripple our ability to build affordable housing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Let's go ahead, members, and vote on those findings. Let's open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, now that item is before us, and we have two public card speakers, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler. Mr. Walsh on special two?
At HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. What this, I don't like these things snuck in. We found it on the bulletin board, so we don't have to ask for a copy. But I'm telling you right now, the taxes are out of control. This is a way of fighting Trump, and I'm not against that. But I just want, we'll see how Englander votes on it, since he's the only Republican up here. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Spindler?
Right. So I read it. Talked to Councilman Sadio briefly. He supports it. So basically, what it is, is the Trump administration's going to take away home interest mortgage deduction when it goes past $500,000. You can't buy a house for $500,000 in this city, so it's going to kill the housing market out here. And then who's being, doing this? All these Republican shitballs in Washington, DC that can't write a tax bill, they're going to take and strangle our economy to pay for these other states, these red fucking states that put scumbag Trump in the White House. The blue states have to pay the taxes for the red states to get the break to put the scumbag back in the White House. So yes, that's what the motion says. You're against it. Marquez is against it. Corretts is against it, but Englander's against it because Englander's a scumbag fucking Republican Trump supporter.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. That concludes cards on this item. Mr. Buscano? Here we go.
Special two. Thank you so much. So Mr. Huizar, thank you for moving this special forward. And in my comments earlier, we had over 4,000 municipal leaders across the country. And by the way, these are municipal leaders that have a D and an R next to their names. When it comes to threatening to eliminate new market tax credits and other tax credits that really impact municipalities, it's a hit in the people that we serve. Here in the city of Los Angeles, if we eliminate the new market tax credit, it's going to take a hit on the progress being made at Jordan Downs in Watts, where we're adding and doubling the size of housing, 1,400 affordable homes in our Watts community. If these tax credits are eliminated, as we're advancing on the redevelopment of Rancho San Pedro in downtown San Pedro, where we want to improve the quality of life, where people today still living in World War II housing stock, this will take a hit. So I want to thank this council and this body for moving forward and sending a message to our federal colleagues that we're not going to stand for these hits that are going to affect the people that we serve. So on behalf of not only the municipal leaders of the National League of Cities that had took a stance and that were very vocal on this new tax proposal, thank you, Jose, for moving this forward and sending a message to DC and saying enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Mr. Huizar, would you like to close on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Let's open the row, close the row, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we please rise for adjourned motions? Members of the public, I will ask you to rise as well out of respect for adjourned Any adjourned motions to my right? Seeing none, any adjourned motions to my left? Mr. Huizar, or Mr. Buscano?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Madam President, and today I ask that we adjourn in memory of Alfonso Garcia. Mr. Garcia was born in Los Angeles in 1939 and grew up in Boyle Heights, where he graduated from Roosevelt High School in 1957. He began his career at the age of 18 with the city of Los Angeles, where he worked as a street sweeper for the Bureau of Street Services. Alfonso would share stories with his family about how back when he started, they used to sweep, sweep the streets by hand. In 1970, it was a memorable year for Alfonso. He was promoted to equipment operator and also moved into his home in the beautiful community of Hillside Village in Council District 14. He always had kind words for the people he worked with, including foreman Jim Salcedo and Henry August and Alton Ferguson, his supervisor. During his career, Alfonso was known as a reliable crew leader who would always get the job done. His motto was "can do." Through the years, he saw it all, working overtime, clearing the mudslides in the canyons during heavy rains, working with the Los Angeles Police Department to clear alleyways, and teaching the new generation how to become good operators. He enjoyed sharing his knowledge with them because he loved his job. Alfonso Garcia retired in 1994 after 36 years of faithful service and was very proud of his tenure with the Bureau of Street Services Maintenance Division. We are truly grateful for his service to the city of Los Angeles. He will be greatly missed by his family and friends. Our condolences to a great employee and a great servant to the city of Los Angeles. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. May he rest in peace. Mr. Huizar, I meant. Mr. Buscano?
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Angie Papadakis, born to Greek immigrant parents in 1925. Although she was born in Oklahoma, she spent her young and adult life in Los Angeles after moving as a child. She married Tom Papadakis, a San Pedro businessman, and together they enjoyed 58 years together before his passing in 2005. They had three sons together, Tom, John, and Nick. Angie's community service began in 1963 when she became the Director and Secretary of the Los Angeles County Lung Association Board. However, education advocacy would become her leading priority. She devoted countless hours ensuring that every student received a quality education. She served four terms on the LA County Board of Education and one term on the California Board of Education, also an award-winning humorist, writing scripts for cartoonists. For television, Angie provided gags for notable such as Johnny Carson, Bob Hope, and Groucho Marx. She also became a professional public speaker, addressing clubs, organizations, and businesses throughout the West Coast. And we are keeping her entire family and close fans in mind during this time. Very popular member of our community, and she will be truly missed. Donations can be made in her memory to the St. Catherine Building Fund. May Angie rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Are there any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a good day.